Not shitty.
You should see them, they're there to hit a bike week when he goes up.
He has a special little pouch for them.
No, no, probably only do like four months, I probably won't do one.
He's got his leather chaps and one in each pocket, it's really cute.
Get that picture out Barrington connections right away.
Don't tempt him, he will. Oh yeah, so you're not in good mood? You're not in good mood?
I'm tired, okay.
Why are you the better?
Oh, it's sixty-three degrees today.
What's wrong with that?
It's six oh four.
It's five fifty-nine by forty.
Oh, just kidding.
All right, Jeff, we ready?
I just stole this, is that okay?
That's totally fine.
Is it somebody's?
She'll bill you.
Good evening and welcome to the December third regular school board meeting. Mrs. Dealey, do you have some pledges you'd like to introduce?
I have Adam and Finley, I'm on up to the old microphone, and these are students of Mrs. Vicki, so she's going to join us to. So Adam and Finley are kindergarten students in Mrs. Vicki's class, and they came to kindergarten like many kindergartners do, a little shy, a little unsure of things, but they have really, in just a quick few weeks, right, it's been one trimester, they have worked really hard, and now Mrs. Vicki describes them as competent, curious, very good friends, they are kind and helpful, and just kindergarten rock stars, so that's why they have this honor tonight of stating the pledge allegiance for us, and they also like him to say the pledge really, really well, so, are you ready to do that? All right, everybody stand. Now you're hard, you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is Mrs. Taylor, and she has a floor chair, and she's had, thank you. You have all the great job. Nice job. Thank you. And I'm pretty impressed that you started kindergarten shy and walked into this room and did this, so.
Confident, confident.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
That's it, your work here is done.
You're all welcome to stay, I mean. I know, and they enunciated.
I don't know Lucy, it's gonna be a time back to.
It always is.
It's true, it's true.
All right, so, any changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second that one.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, minutes from the November twelfth public and November nineteenth public and non-public. Sure. Which date do you need separate?
The twelfth, I'm sorry.
Okay, so minutes for the November twelfth public meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from November twelfth public.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, staying.
For November nineteenth public and non-public?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, cuteness overload has left Lucy.
I don't know.
Well.
Whoa.
I wouldn't describe a young woman as cute.
That is true.
Since her high school years, god.
She doesn't have to be cute, she's beautiful, she's talented, she's smart, outgoing.
Let's not suck up.
All the adjectives.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I last spoke to you guys October fifteenth, so it's been, a lot has happened. I'm gonna start like club by club, so No Intel Peer to Peer, which focuses on like educating adults about knowing the signs of abuse and telling respective authorities, on September twenty-seventh, they were at the Deerfield Fair hosting an ice cream stand fundraiser, and November fifteenth, they organized a parent night off where parents could pay to drop off their kids, and they got a five dollar discount if they brought a hygiene item, which would be donated to the Rockingham County Child Advocacy Center Community Closet. Our student-athlete leadership team, better known as SALT, they tended their members on November sixteenth, spent time tidying our campus, which is a very nice thing to do, they also partnered with my club, National Honor Society, to organize a food drive for Thanksgiving, to, they donate to end sixty-eight hours of hunger, which I think just ended, but there are boxes like all over our school. Also, NHS is selling, they were selling calendars for our calendar raffle to raise money for our scholarships, like, things like fifty dollars Starbucks gift cards and like Almelos gift cards and that kind of thing. Peer helpers, they organized a giving tree in the lobby, so ornament, all the ornaments have a kid and a gift that they want, and you can buy that and bring it to the office. Our CBNA film club, they released their first short film called Joe IG Saves the Day, it's on our Instagram page, it's cute, it's short, it's funny. We were shown it in like my Spanish classes, my Spanish teacher like runs that club, along with like a few other clubs that he runs, he's very involved. Otherwise, a group of our students participated in the health, health career expo at Portsmouth, Portsmouth Regional Hospital, one of our students ended up talking about it on the news, but I couldn't find that clip with sound, I just know she was in my grade and she was on the news. Students participated at the New Hampshire Bring Back the Trade and Trade Apalooza Career Fair, so promoting, promoting awareness about trade careers, there were like four thousand like people there, you could learn about all kinds of things, and they had numerous scholarship opportunities there as well. A physician from the Sea Coast Cancer Center, so, centers from Mass General at Wentworth Douglas Hospital came to visit our boys soccer team to thank them for their three thousand seven hundred donation towards their Sea Coast Cancer 5K fundraiser. Six of our students, six of our like Russian language students participated in the Russian Language Day at UNH on November eighth, so they participated in intermediate Russian class, they got tours, they participated in a trivia game where they got Russian chocolate. On November fifteenth, our winners of the Voice of Democracy was announced, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Voice of Democracy? It's like an international like program where you can like win money for giving a recorded essay about a prompt, particularly like views on democracy and patriotism, even in our school, for a second and a third, they win cash like there, the guy comes, they read your name down, and you, I think, someone in my grade when it was our turn, because it's sophors and juniors participate, she got like a backpack with some money in it, which is, seems catchy, but it was. On November second, we had our craft fair, it raises money for our twenty-twenty-seven class, so they had a career where vendors had to donate something that was worth five, five dollars so people could bid on it, and my club, Spanish Honor Society, they gave food for all the vendors and people there, so there was like chili and bagels and, I think they had Ecuadorian bread that they had baked the day before, I actually was a vendor there because I was there for my own senior project, I should have brought one, but I've been crocheting sea turtles that I sell for fifteen dollars, a hundred percent of the proceeds go to Oceanic Society, so I was there from like nine AM to two PM and sold out, I sold nineteen of my sea turtles, I was at a craft fair also last Saturday as well selling, so, I've been doing that as a beach cleanups for my own thing, but that's a side thing.
In all your free time.
Yeah, all of that, right? On November eighth and ninth, our theater department gave the musical A Year with Frog and Toad, it was my favorite musical I've seen so far, they did a really good job, I mean, like the set looked really good too, which is like a side me thing, but they had like lily pads like actually on the floor and everything, and it was, it was like cute and interactive. Our winter sports have started, I personally have joined the bowling team, not out of a specific passion, but it's like, it's interesting, and the people on there, you don't, they encourage that you don't need to be good to join, so I was, I was pressured, and I so far have enjoyed it very much though. Yes. Classes wise, Ms. Hume, her world history class traveled the Silk Road through our English basement through, English Hall, sorry, where they had posters all about with papers with information about like different stops and like, all that stuff, one of the like posters was on my English class door, so we could hear them outside during one of our classes. Mr. Ashley's American History class, combined with Mr. Tanasco's, developed propaganda material about World War One, so they had like poems, songs, ads, opinion pieces out in the hallway, some of the ads were very well done and artistic, because I could see them passing by. We had a creative writing field trip on October twenty-first, they were at Portsmouth, I think specifically Strawberry Bank, which basically means that almost all the senior class was gone because the creative writing class is made up of mostly seniors. AP Physics, my class, we had a, our ramp lab, where we have to make a ramp out of our own materials, and calculate the velocity and put a bucket outside a window and shoot a marble into it, it was, it was, yeah, it was fun, it was a lot of days of calibrating velocity, it was interesting. In other news, Seth and Emily, Seth Brown and Emily Sheldon, they're two kids from my grade, they were accepted into New Hampshire Music Educator's Jazz All-State Festival, Seth was accepted for honors jazz band as a tenor saxophone, Emily Sheldon, one of my friends, was accepted into the jazz choir as a soprano tenor. Conquered. Sorry, I can't read my own handwriting. Conquered. Won a term, they announced fall twenty-twenty-four, like honoring like athletes, where a girl in my grade, Haley Camo, was honored for volleyball, she actually is also a Barrington kid. On Saturn news, we, Cobrants currently mourning the loss of Cole Jones, a junior in our school, they've been announcing like calling hours and that kind of stuff. Also, I left you guys off with hopes of news of cows for our classes, if any of you guys remember that, Ms. Gelsner's core class have received their cow assignment from Adopt a Cow Program through the New England Dairy, they have named her Bonfire, she was born September twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, and they've accepted another cow, another calf named Bonnie. That is all I got.
That was it?
So not much going on then?
No, not really.
When you come back, I want to hear more about your senior project though.
Okay, I can bring one of the turtles too, actually. Yeah, I also knitted one of like the big thick yarn, so he's about like three feet long, his name's Big Louis, he's seventy-five dollars. One of my friend's moms, she's a teacher, she's interested in buying him for her classroom, so hopefully he'll be going to a nice classroom.
It's actually very reasonable for a sea turtle.
Right? It's like all day to crochet that guy.
Did you see where they just rescued a hundred of them from, from cold shock at the New England Aquarium?
No, I did not.
They're rehabbing them now.
Anything else for Lucy?
Good job, that's very thorough, I got like a.
Thank you very much.
Smattering of everything.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Well, if you don't mind, I will add that we did reach out to Lucy and commend her for the thorough, wonderful job that she has done for us over the years, and she has graciously agreed to allow us to use snippets from her presentations at board meetings to share with other up and coming high school representatives.
Like this is how it's supposed to be done?
So people have a clear picture of the kinds of things that we want to hear about, so.
Every kid coming up is like, damn Lucy.
How many clubs is she in?
I remember early, early visits of me coming here being very, it was alerting her public speaking.
Still warm up, it's still. Well, you do great, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Of course, as always, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you, but I have a lot.
Couldn't push that chair in fast enough.
Those are turtles, man.
All right, so we're up to our first opportunity for public comment, as always, there'll be a second, anyone in person? Gotta put on my sight enhancers to look for little hands, I don't see anything online, I'm not missing anything to, all right, okay, again, as always, there's another opportunity, so we'll be moving on to School Board Advisory Budget Committee question and answer session regarding the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed operating budget, it's quite a line. Sorry.
So how would you like us to come up first? If you have questions out in the air?
I want them to come up to the seat, the two, the open seats.
The open seats?
Yeah, sure.
On the other side?
Yeah, we can slide them through.
Sorry to divide you.
Actually Dave, you can just shout yours.
We do have a couple of proposed updates or things for y'all to consider, if you wanted me to start there from all the organized thoughts.
Sure, that makes sense, because maybe he'll answer questions.
Exactly. We did just receive our current year Dover High School tuition rate, it came in a little bit higher than we anticipated, which makes me feel as though at eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty per pupil for this school year, we had projected twenty thousand for next year, but that only gives us a little under eleven hundred wiggle room, and they tend to go up by more like fifteen hundred to two thousand, so I would suggest that in that particular line, that we go up to twenty thousand five hundred per student, if we look at the current projected numbers, of course, we don't really know until students make those choices in February, but that would be an additional seventy-eight thousand five hundred to that line, if we wanted to boost that projection, I think would be a much more, what was that number?
Which one?
Predictable number, that line is, let me find you the page number. It's the eleven hundreds. Tuition public, so page four, to, line forty-three.
On the three-year summary, sixteen million four hundred and seventy-three thousand, is that included?
No, we did not move that, we just had that number and had that discussion today. And in addition to that suggestion, food service repairs, which is page, that's way down there in the threes. Page twenty-four, line. Still page twenty-four, repairs and maintenance, which is line eight, we tend to, the state tends to give us what they call a spend down plan, and so we have had some repairs that we've had to do over the years, which is why Joe had increased that line, but I think we are safe in looking at the history and putting that to five thousand with a one thousand dollar increase, so backing that out by ten thousand dollars, anticipating that we will probably have funds from the state through a spend down plan to use for potential equipment and repairs in the future, so we felt like that was a safe additional reduction in what we had originally put in there. So those were the two, it's amazing how this just continues to evolve throughout the ball, but those were the two additional things that when we sat and looked again line by line today that we felt were important to bring forward.
So with those two changes, what's the total operating budget proposed? Do you have that number?
We didn't put the high school number in, but the five hundred per student, based on what we predict the numbers to be, would be an additional seventy-eight thousand five hundred, if you take away the ten from food service, then another sixty-eight five.
Okay.
Actually, I take that back, we did take the food service repair line out, but did not add the high school number in.
Okay, so net effect of seventy-eight five?
From what, the three-year summary page you have in front of you, yes.
All right.
Or do we just add it to the list?
Vicki, would it be possible in the next few days to get an updated list with the new percent change to both groups, thank you.
So I'm gonna jump in with some questions then, I'll just buzz the budget and go through my questions, before I do that, I just wanted to make a statement to the board in the interest of full disclosure, many of you know I'm employed at the, by the Oyster River School District, there are dollars in this budget that go to the Oyster River School District, and I wanted to say that in case anybody thinks that there's a conflict of interest on my part, now would be the time to tell me that.
David, I'm employed by the Dover School District.
I'm employed by the Oyster River. Worked quite often, so yeah.
Well, thank you for that.
You're all corrupt.
But thank you for being transparent.
Not really, seven point two four percent tuition increase at seven, and you and I poppin' in the room.
There we go, we'll take that up in the interim. So I'm gonna start just on page one, I'm confused, on the eleven hundred series, line five, six, seven, and eight, has to do with salaries, and I would assume that salaries were collective bargaining, and what are the differences I see between, if they were collective bargaining, I would think proposed and default would be the same number, and the differences are odd to me, and the other thing that's really odd to me is that the percentages aren't even, again, if it were a collective bargaining thing, like, in the proposed budget, line five is an eight point eight percent increase, and line eight is a one point eight percent increase, and that doesn't, I'm just struggling to understand how that comes to be.
So these are just staff changes from last year to this year, because all of the CBA is, is going to be on the line.
So.
This is just.
So it's staff, you've got people at different scales moving around and think.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you. So eleven hundred, series line eighty-four, middle, knee ask, middle school dues and fees. And in the. So the default was five thousand, and the, so we went up by forty-nine nine, and I think we talked about this in an earlier meeting, I just want you to kind of recap it for me.
So they are due back for a visit, so we have to pay for hotels, meals, travel for the visiting team to come back and do that update.
This is for accreditation?
Correct.
At the middle school?
Correct.
Only?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
How long, they're here for like a few days, right?
A couple days, yeah.
Yeah.
How much does a room at the Riviera cost?
You can stack three in one room, don't ask me, I only know that.
That's nice, you know what? How many can you put up?
I'm, I got a two-car garage.
Yeah.
So I'm on, I'm in the twelve hundred now, page six, line seven, eight, nine, and I think this is probably the same answer as my first question, Vicki shaking her head yes, so that's just staff shuffling around.
New hires and shifts.
Okay, so the guaranteed maximum rate on the health insurance, twelve point four, has the district explored other options, it's changing carriers?
So that is part of our negotiations conversation, like the health coverage is in that agreement, so that is.
So the health coverage is part tied to the CPAs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, but we have in the past looked at other options, and there are many districts right now who are moving from one of the more popular, one that is school-based in the state, to school care.
Yeah, so I guess my comment then would be, I can understand it's tied to CBA, but you might want to reopen negotiations for twelve and a half percent, we may be to find something that's amenable, not only to the taxpayers, but to the, to the employees as well, that twelve and a half is a pretty big number, that might be worth reopening the contract, just throwing that out there.
Can I help in real quick?
Sure.
So on that point, have we approached, I know Rick, you had talked a little bit earlier about collaboration with the, with the town as well, is that an option, could we possibly, you know, negotiate a better, better price for, in coverage, if we went as a community versus just.
We're in the midst of that process as we speak, actually, we just talked about that today and forwarded some information along to Connor Maguire.
But historically, isn't it true that insuring firemen and policemen is more expensive than insuring teachers?
Correct.
So it doesn't do us much good.
This is the rates for the bigger population.
We wouldn't benefit from this. And preliminary results of that has been, because of course they look at your current usage, a few years ago this was done, and it looked like there would be a couple hundred thousand dollar savings to the community, we had to go back to school care and ask for some additional numbers, because Health Trust did their numbers on one population in year, and School Care did theirs on a different one, so we weren't looking apples to apples, so that was the additional conversation and request of School Care, but the initial look at it, when Connor and I met last month, he didn't feel as though there would be the significant savings that we had predicted was a potential in the past, but we are continuing to explore that.
In my fifteen years on the board, I think we've looked at this probably a hint like four or five times, and it's never.
It's just, it's such a big line item, it's like, right? You see the twelve, and I get it, health insurance is expensive, but you know.
But I, but I don't want to speak for everyone, but I think I can, we're all in favor of doing as much collaboration as possible, if it makes sense and doesn't hurt the school system at the same time.
When we were looking through it today, that, the health insurance numbers were what kept popping off the page, right? I mean, it's just, and every districts are realizing that across the state right now, it's, it's tough.
Okay, I'm gonna jump up to page ten, and the proposed, forty-five, lines forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven are full-time RNs with no increase, so am I reading that correctly, that we've got people that aren't gonna see an increase in?
Teacher CBA.
Pardon me?
They're in the teacher's CBA.
The nurses are in the teacher's CBA, thank you.
So you don't see any changes because the who has remained stable?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep talking about salary, so, and you probably have great answers, I'm on page eleven, line ninety-one, and line one hundred and one, so full-time speech-language pathologist and psychologist, I'm seeing big decreases, and these are salary lines.
The, so the school psychologist, number of days were reduced.
Okay.
There used to be a additional number of days in order to encompass summer school programming and other needs, and other people, other related service folks, if they need additional days, we just grant that on a request per DM rate basis, so instead of encompassing them in this one person's contract, we made that contract consistent with all the rest of the people in that group, and then the decrease was a staff change in the other line, in the speech and language.
Okay.
One person left, and the person who came on had fewer years experience.
Sure, okay, great, thank you. And I know we had talked about, jumping ahead to twenty-three, ten, page sixteen, line sixteen, website and public relations, so the website piece I think I understand, it's because the website is not terribly cellphone friendly, what's the public relations piece I don't understand, is that just, is the website public relations, or is there another part to this that?
Other notifications, like when we put out RFPs, different things, when we're, you know, posting positions, the verbiage has always been there, I guess.
Okay.
But the increase is solely for the website?
The increase is just for the website.
The description is just kind of a legacy description?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And that line started at like fifteen or ten?
It started at ten, yeah.
It started at ten, and we've brought it down to seven, okay. Okay. Okay, custodial. I'm on page 21, line 25 and 26. I guess I'm not, the comment is telling me, I think that five staff are seeing a dollar an hour increase in both cases, and that results in a negative number?
We had one last staff come, we had one left that we didn't replace because we took on the cleaning service. Is that right, Joe?
Yeah.
We had one that left that we didn't replace.
Okay. So is there an open position now?
There has been.
And you were just gonna ride it out?
Can't find anyone.
Okay. So when this, when this negative, when this, if this proposed budget goes into effect and those two negative amounts become part of our budget, the open position is gone?
Correct.
Okay.
It's been sitting open for almost two years now, and we just figured if we were gonna make the move to a different cleaning service, why hang a position out there in the budget that we haven't been able to fill?
Okay.
And there's an increase in the cleaning?
Correct.
Right, so, I don't, it's not a...
So yeah, that's on the next, that's my, there's my next question. Thank you, we're at page 22. Line 44, evening cleaning, new company, and line 46, evening clean, new company. Can you explain that?
You wanna do it, you want me to do it?
Sure. Go ahead. That was pretty slick.
Yeah, it wasn't, I shouldn't have asked, right? No, it's fine. So I think, as you know, you've been here with us historically, ever since COVID, we've had this struggle maintaining custodial staff. So at one point, in order to take that burden off our teaching staff and other staff members, we had to contract services.
Remember this, yeah?
We have had a lot of difficulty maintaining the same people through the contracted service and the level of cleaning that we expect for our students and staff in our school buildings. So we have met with several different vendors and have looked at options to move to a different cleaning company in order to realize an upgrade to the day-to-day service that we have been experiencing.
What's the recourse that we have if, you know, so we obviously have trouble, it's not a, it's gotta be a tough position to fill, right? In the custodial positions. What's the recourse that we have if the contractor doesn't provide services up to our standards? Can we cancel the contract? But then we'd have to find...
Right. Need a replacement prior to doing that.
Then we go back to the teachers of helping out.
So in the custodial contract, is it a step? Is it a wage scale a step for our custodians?
For our custodians, we, usually it's a dollar amount.
They have a CBA?
No.
Oh, okay. There's my question.
Yeah.
So then I'm back to my previous question about the, we're taking out a position and we're reducing the budget by $30,000. So the position that we're taking out was...
So it's 15 overall for that building, but since that position has been in there, other people have realized raises, so...
So it's under, it's 1442 an hour with absolutely no benefits?
Right.
So we actually had custodians working without any health insurance or...
And then historically, we had people...
At $14 an hour?
At $14 an hour.
A couple of years ago, we had people at $13 an hour.
Which is probably why we can't fill it.
We've gone up significantly since then.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
The decrease is not only that person coming out, but the increases of the current staff.
Right.
Okay. Yes, yes, okay, that makes a little more sense.
So that person, the unfilled person wasn't just making 1432 when they left. We haven't been able to hire anybody for under 17.
Essentially, the net impact is cleaning services, whether in-house or out-of-house, is going up by $30,000, but we're gonna have a much more reliable service, people that we...
And we just felt like it wasn't responsible for us to continue holding a position in the budget that we haven't been able to fill when it doesn't reduce the cost of the cleaning service overall.
Good. And the new company, is it, it's a contract?
Which we don't, we haven't signed any new contracts or have gone on with any new company yet, but it's a company that also the town has shifted to.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, the town used that company and they've been to the Public Safety Building twice since this fall, and they've done a phenomenal job of, you know, we have a custodian that comes in part-time and does some cleaning for us, but they came in and did on two different occasions, deep cleaning, and they were fantastic. They were there and they worked all day long and...
I don't have any doubt about that. My question about contractors more this, if we bring, if we bring in a contractor that starts cleaning and we've got somebody in our building, they're going to our building every time, right? That's their home, and they're doing a great job. We know them, they know us, and we work well together. At some point, it would be probably in our best interest and in that person's best interest that they became our employee. Contractor, it's no longer in their best interest, right? Then that's where the language of the contract kinda, how do they feel about us hiring their employees after maybe a certain amount of time or some kinda something?
There's usually a clause in the contract that says that you can't...
That's what I would wanna look at.
Sorry, nice, but no.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't appreciate that.
My employee.
No, I can't imagine they would, but at the same time, it's...
Diligence.
Like I said, it's in that employee's best interest too, you know, so...
Maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe. Yeah, okay, yeah. That's all the questions I had, so...
I just had, just to follow up on that, is there a cost savings because we're gonna be using the same cleaning service as the town? Is that what I heard? We'll be using the same one as the town? No.
We haven't...
But if you choose to, oh, okay.
Because we haven't shifted to that company.
So this is just an estimate?
Correct.
So we don't really know?
I think the intention is to try to, and I certainly, it's hard for me to speak for the town side, but from a collaborative standpoint, I think that's what the ultimate end goal is, is to, the town needs custodial help more than what they have for part-time custodians. So what they're, I think what the plan is between the town and the school is, is that ultimately, one company doing both sides of the coin, if you will, will ultimately end up saving us as taxpayers some money.
Thank you.
So I'm Scott Ramsey, by the way, for those of you who don't know me. I have three kids in the Barrington School District, so. My question, first and foremost, I appreciate everything that's been done in terms of the budget. I know it's not easy, and I know that, you know, a lot of time and effort has been put into putting this together, so thank you for that. My concern is the difference between the default budget and the proposed budget, right? Obviously, we're trying to balance the, providing the students the best level of education that we can while maintaining and being, you know, good stewards for the taxpayers of Barrington, which is, which is kind of the goal. So is there, my concern is that if the proposed budget is as high or higher than the default budget, right, people are gonna look at it and say, hey, I'm just gonna take the default budget because of, you know, it's too much, too much more. So I guess my question would be, is there any sort of like programming that we can look at? And I know we've done a good job in like paring it back from what the original ask was, and, you know, that's really, I think, I think we've done a good job, but, you know, is there anything else that we can do to close the gap between proposed and default? You know, is it, you know, maybe reevaluating, postponing programs or curriculum or, you know, it's a balance of, you know, making those tough decisions while trying to get the best education possible for the kids, which, you know, I don't envy you guys at all for that. But, you know, from your point of view, is there any programming that we can kind of reevaluate or anything that we can look at and say, hey, you know, maybe not this year, maybe we, you know, push it a year down the road? And I know there's cycles, and I know, you know, from, learnt a lot here in the last, you know, couple of months, but my concern is that if the proposed budget stays where it is, then the default budget's going to be what the taxpayers select. And at that point, you know, then we have to make some tougher decisions about, you know, what actually is gonna come into play.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, and I'll just say that the Budget Committee on the town side has kind of expressed them same concerns. Certainly, I don't want to speak for Danin, who is the representative of the Budget Committee, but there's some concerns on the town side of the Budget Committee that we could end up with a default budget on the town side as well. And, you know, with the state cutting funding, you know, they're already, we're already, you know, we elected new legislator and governor and all this, and they're already talking about, there's gonna be cuts in federal funding and state funding, and so what that ultimately means is that lands on the backs of, even when I as taxpayer or programs get caught, that's a sad fact. And I think with the sheer number of stuff that's on both sides, the town and the school, I won't be a little bit surprised at the taxpayers after accepting a pretty good, pretty sizable hit on their taxes last year and sizable increase on their valuation, which made your property taxes go up. Wouldn't surprise me one bit to see people standing there and picking and choosing what they're gonna support. And I wouldn't, I'm not gonna stand here and try to tell you that I have any kind of idea what that is, but I'd be some surprised if everything on both sides sailed through and...
I just, just to add to that, we haven't met as a committee yet, so I apologize. I probably could have said this to you at another time, but, so just, I think that, I agree, we've done a great, I think that you all have done a great job really paring down, really looking at what we really need and where we are in our five-year, in your, not our, they're not mine, where you are in your five-year goals. And I think that a lot of, a lot of it is, and I don't want my taxes to go up for sure, and I think a lot of it is how we talk about it to the taxpayers and how we talk about what those drivers are and why, why the difference, right? And just why we, why we know that it's important for kids. And that's kind of where I'm at with this. And I agree with you that it's a lot, and it's a big increase, and it's bigger than we've seen.
It's got the sticker shock value too to it, right?
Yeah.
So what's the percent increase of proposed over default?
So...
1.5.
It's 1.5.
It's less than that, but unless we make the decision to increase the Dover high rate.
1.43 if you factor in the Dover.
Yep.
Which is in, which is in the realm of, historically, you know, the percentage increase is insane, like, right? Everyone's gonna look at it and be like, holy, and I, you know. But when you think about, usually defaults comes in around 2 and we come in around 3.3 or 3.4. You're within that, where it's still within the sweet spot of the difference, right? I think whoever said that the most important thing is communication, a lot of it, the hands are tied. I think, I mean, I think that we have really whittled down anything that's discretionary to the bare bones, and I think, I mean, I think they're leaving a lot of stuff on the table. So even a curriculum cycle is being skipped in order to get it down, right?
Right. So I guess my point is like, hey, you know, the taxpayer, you know, is gonna see that 1.4% discretionary increase, right? Would we have, would we be better off going to the taxpayer at a 0.7, right? And I get that it would hurt, but are we gonna have better, I guess, do you know the amount of times that a default budget versus a proposed budget has passed in, like, let's say the last 10 years?
Zero. Right? Default?
Well, in my tenure, it was the year before, so 16 years ago was the...
It was default.
Oh, actually, no, that was the year they cut 300,000, so the actual budget was below default and the budget passed.
So in 10 years, it's not, in my tenure?
So, and I just, I just wanna say, like, we've used the word discretionary, but some of the things that are in the proposed budget that aren't included in the default is transportation, our transportation contract. That's not discretionary.
Right.
I think all parents would agree, not discretionary, they want buses.
Custodial's our goal, right?
The big picture items, and I think it would benefit all of us, and I will, I've already started to prepare a slide to speak to this. I think it's important to talk about that one point, wherever it lands, 4, 3%, you know, we'll redo the numbers. You know, it is transportation, it's food service, like, those two items are not in the default budget. And then you have a little bit of money in there for curriculum because we're taking off $560,000 of an English Language Arts Cycle, but we can't do nothing.
Right.
So we, there are consumables, there are, you know, texts that, and other materials that we need to purchase, plus we're in the middle of our social studies review cycle. So we would be tossing aside a lot of, you know, 15 years of really hard work to get ourselves to this point.
Sure.
And then there are some things in, so we have the website upgrade, which I also think is important and has to be ADA compliant, in addition to some of the items in facilities that, you know, we can't fault utilities increases. And, you know, we've never had a line for tree service maintenance, and, you know, we've had some safety issues with some trees coming down, one being hit by lightning, you know, et cetera. So to not, although it's a huge number, I, and, you know, wherever the vote lands, it lands, but I feel like we've done everything that we can to keep it as responsible as we can, and I do agree that it will be very important to speak to those specific items. I mean, I shouldn't say only, in a 30 million, 32 million dollar budget, it's an only, but it's under 4, it's under $400,000. So the last count, it was like 356, 997.
Right.
So, because there's other areas where we've already decreased so that we could ensure that, you know, the things we were adding in weren't then pushing the envelope even further.
Right.
We tried really hard again today to take out what we could, and at this point, I just feel like we would be really compromising, not even, you know, our status quo and hoping to make a little bit of forward progress, you know, with students. It's...
I hear what you're saying, though, from a perception standpoint, and I think in the past, when we do budget presentations, our tonality is probably different than it probably will be this year. I think a lot of what we are gonna end up focusing on, whether it's on the slide deck or it's conversational in the public meeting, is going to be, here's what we're not gonna be able to provide if we don't receive the support that we have accounted on and appreciated in the past. And I think that it's a different tone, not a Chicken Little cry, you know, crying the sky is falling, but just mourning, it's their choice, but, but I agree with you that if we don't present it in that way, it would be very difficult for a taxpayer who doesn't watch these meetings, read these minutes, to really digest. I think it's a great point.
And I think it's important too, and obviously, I'm sure you're gonna do a great job with it, but, you know, to say, hey, here's where we started, here's where we ended up, right?
That's the point.
Well, Scott, that, that plus the, in the voter guide, like, what's in 1.43%?
Right.
Right. Tiny number percentage, but what is it?
What's, what that $2 million increase, what's that come back to on the tax rate? Your total increase from the 2.1 million increase, what's that figure out to in the tax rate?
No, we don't have it yet.
But also, I think, as much as we can change the presentation to address the elephant in the room, I don't think we hide from the number. I think we own it and we go forward with our chin out about it because if there's one word that's become pretty understandable to the public and our voter is very intelligent and caring, is inflation. Everything is more expensive now than it was a year ago. And so, you know, getting your head around the idea that transportation is just costing more money. The fact that, you know, all of a sudden, our high schools are charging us more money, people are gonna say, it stinks, I don't want it, it doesn't make me happy, but that is what it is. And I think that where, and I don't think there's anything that we have to hide from that, I don't think of any weird projects that were stuffed into the budget. We've actually...
Taken them all out.
Anything exciting that we wanted to do this year. Right? So like, this is just trying to keep afloat and not, you know, have you guys go, you know, you're...
But looking at, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but the problem is you gotta look at it globally, and when you start looking at, the town's looking at a, almost a 10% increase right now. And there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of fluff in that either. There's a police officer and there's a little extra money for part-time help in the fire department, but there's not, the biggest hit of that 10% increase is the fact that we voted to support the bond for the library. And I'm not saying we shouldn't have done that, it's just, but we voted for that, we supported it, and we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay for it this year. And the thing is, is, and this was my big thing about really wanting to have a Budget Committee that looked at everything globally, is for that reason, is because you look at a 10% increase on the town side and you look at a 7.5% increase on this side and you gotta... on this side and you got a teacher's contract and, and they got, I think, Danin, what is there, about $900,000 in warrant articles on the town side? So that, the point is, is that it goes back to what you're saying. At some point, as a taxpayer, nobody wants their taxes to go up, but you sit there and look at your tax bill and you looked at your assessed value, your house went up, and people are going to sit there and go, well, this is important to me, I'm going to support this, but I'm not going to support this. And, you know, again, I don't know where it's going to land, maybe everything passes like it did last year, but...
I think the big thing is for neither the town nor the school side to get caught with some weird fluffy thing that it just screams, that is a waste of money, so maybe the rest of this is. And as long as we can look at the voters during the deliberative and just say that there's nothing here, I mean, you can, so...
I, I can't even count how many times I said to Vicki today, I'm still looking for something, like, I want something to jump off the page where I can get that number closer. And it, it's just not there. And because we also, like we've already said, we have a teacher contract being negotiated. And we also know that salaries with positions, you know, across the state, you know, are just increasing. So it's just hard to, to pare down anywhere.
I mean, just look at, what we just talked about, about the custodian services, which we tried to hire people at $13.60 an hour. You walk into Target and you're starting at 16.50, what percentage increase is that just for labor, right? So I mean, that's, that's the nature of the world we're living in right now, so...
For what it's worth, in the number of years I've done this, and I don't remember how many it is, but this is the most aggressively I've seen the school board and the administration pare down a budget. You know, pulling out the curriculum was, was huge. That was, that was a big concession. And the way I look at this, it's, it's not a seven and a half percent increase, it's a 1.4% increase, because the default budget is going to happen, right? It's, it's not open for the go, that's going to happen, right? So it's really what, the conversation is about 1.4. And, and you said the, the town was at 10, maybe you could speak to what the default, what's the percent difference between default and proposed on the town side?
Well, we don't work on that.
Okay.
We don't work on that very much, but I think it's something like 2%.
Okay. So it was 1.5 and 2%. In the past, we, we said earlier, in the past 15 years, the voters have supported the proposed budget. And that's always been, what did we say, about one and a half to 3%? We're on the low end of that now. And yeah, you, you're, you're right, chief, at some point, some people are going to, people are going to have a problem, but at the same point, the world keeps moving, you know, stuff costs more every year, and we've been through some, some really rough inflation. So from my perspective, I can't speak for the entire Budget Committee, but from my perspective, you guys have done a hell of a job paring it down and beating it up to the, to the point where I, I don't see what else you can take out of it.
Agreed.
That said, find another 100,000.
Can we participate in a backpack of cash program?
I just, adding, as you were talking, just, again, to me, it's about communication. There are probably many people in the public that think default budget is going to be the same budget as last year. So really just, there are increases in the default budget and here's why, because things go up. And just, I mean, I know the people that come to the meetings know that, but somehow to get the word out there that, you know, I mean, I know the number's going to be there in the voting bo, in the voting booth, so...
Serendipitously, this having this voter guide out here, out there for the first time, it might be the year to do it, right? Because I mean...
Yeah, that would be the place to explain a default budget, also explain what isn't in a default budget so that people understand it's transportation and food service, and then take some time to explain that additional 1.43 or wherever it lands when we...
And let's, let's be careful about not being too technical in our language, let's make it very clean and crisp so that, you know, that someone like Garth could understand it while he's waiting in line.
You underestimate your...
No, I don't. No, I do not.
You want us to do it in crayon for you?
Yes.
No, I mean, I do appreciate, many years ago, when Better Barrington used to put out their whole voter guide that was just very, this is the warrant article, and this is what it means. Because like, I think people get, you know, you get, you see those warrant articles, they're not written in English for people to understand. And, you know, there are some people who think they're written that way just so we can confuse people, and it's like, no, because that's how we have to, no one thinks this is a good idea in this state. But, you know, I, yeah, you know, this will be an important year for messaging about.
Well, I think, again, I think it goes back to the fact that where there's going to be some pretty deep cuts from the federal government and the state, money that we, both the town has depended on and the school districts has depended on, and you might, we might skate through this next budget with that, but then after that, when all of a sudden we get told you're going to get a percentage of what you've been getting, there's one choice. You either, you either have to cut services or you got to turn around and you're putting on the backs of the taxpayers. You know, if you look at, the thing is with both the town and the school, it's, it's people, and people cost money. I've said that all along. And that's what it is. It's, it's, if you, if you took only the pieces that didn't involve teachers and firefighters and police officers and, and staff, you don't have much of a budget on either side that you have any discretionary spending on. So, you know, and you have to maintain your buildings and you got to plow your roads and you got to have any ambulance and a fire truck if somebody needs it.
So I think the New Hampshire Supreme Court in the Claremont decision said that the state, it's incumbent on the state to provide an adequate education. So they could never cut that. The Supreme Court has said no.
Wouldn't that be nice?
I think we have a couple more questions from...
I have one. Hi, I'm Hannah Miner. I have two kids that will be going to ECLC soon. So I've learned so much. I recently learned what default means, so thank you for that. You don't know until you know these things. But I wasn't at the last meeting, so apologies if this went, if people went over this, but at the last meeting, it was discussed about the 28,000, I'm sorry, I'm on page three, line 39.
The STEM camp?
Yes. Which, I work in biotech, I want everyone to go to STEM camp, but I agree that maybe this isn't the year to everyone pay to go to STEM camp. But it's still in here.
So you, you can't take things out of your default. Your default is your default. So there is 15,000 from last year, the current year that was already there. You're not allowed to mess with your default. So we wouldn't use it for STEM camp. It would potentially, if we were to go into a default, we would then have that money to use in another way because we made the decision this year to not increase that and to say, hey, this isn't the time to, for the district, for taxpayers to fund that for, you know, individual families, so...
So proposed, will that turn, will, instead of 28,000 being written for the...
You probably don't have the most recent.
Oh, I'm looking at the one from November 19th, is that not the, that's the one I...
Yeah, we need to rerun it. So STEM camp has been eliminated from the proposed, so that will be at zero.
Okay.
But the, but the original 15 will remain in default.
My understanding is we're still doing STEM camp.
Yeah.
We're not paying all the tuition.
Right, well, so, well, if we, if we end up in a, well, no, we took it fully out of the proposed. So there...
So it's not going to be offered?
Right, but it's in, we would offer it, but it would be fully paid.
Yes.
Like parents have to pay for it.
Correct. We offset it by 15,000.
We didn't say not offer it.
Right. We just had subsidized the, the pay the first year.
Any other questions, comments? Ideas?
I think that's it for us.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
When you all set a time to meet, if somebody could email me and let me know, then I can post your meeting. And if you need a space to meet, let me know that as well, I can set up that up for you if you are going to convene as a group.
So when do you need our vote?
Well, if you post a meeting and you do it then, you can do it then. Otherwise, historically, we've done it after the hearing on January 7th, so whatever you all are comfortable with.
Okay, so didn't, well, actually, we did it at the hearing, right? Right, and then what's the date of the hearing?
The 7th, January 7th.
Historically, when we voted as well, because, like, you hear the public input at the hearing, the 12 people who will be there.
So we will, so am I hearing that yes, you want us to increase the Dover rate by 500?
I think we need to.
I think we need to as well.
To adequately represent what the, we think the cost will be.
I mean, that's only, if we don't, it's only giving us about $1,100 to increase from one year to the next, and we all know that's not reasonable. I don't even think it will go...
More retailers paid out of a grant.
It's not even likely that it will only go up by 1,600, but at least we'll be a little closer to the target. And then, you know, depending on where students go, we've made our best prediction. We don't have the co-brown rate yet either, however, per policy...
Is it traditional for us to wait this late for it?
They, the agreement says they have until later. Traditionally, we have had it by now. I asked, I wasn't given it.
We know they're not going to come in.
Well, they can't, per policy, they can't. Waste a river.
Well, because then, then we have to pay.
Exactly. Right. So I feel like the 500 will give us a little better approximation towards the actual number.
Great. This is why, also, I don't think the public understands that we are right now trying to budget for through June of '26.
And with, you know, 400-plus students who haven't made their high school choices, or, you know, I mean, I shouldn't say 400, because 300 of them will stay, but there's a lot of moving parts.
So let me just get back to that date, Jan, January 7th, is it Tuesday?
6.
January 6th would be a Monday?
Do I have my date wrong?
You have your date wrong.
I don't know. That's what we're...
The budget, budget hearings, the 7th, Tuesday, and then February 8th is deliberative session.
At what time on Tuesday?
6:00 PM in the, at BMS. And February 8th is the deliber, oh my gosh, deliberative, which is Saturday at 9:00. And then, of course, March 11th. I know, I know, it was like, it was like saying policy call numbers.
I don't... Well, we usually would know by, we would know by now. We'd at least tell people there, because the nine of us will be there.
Right.
Fair.
So can the ABC meet Tuesday, January 7th, 6:00 PM at the middle school for the hearing, and then after the hearing, we'll take a private room and have our vote?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye?
Okay, so I'll post, when we post our 7th hearing, I will also post that the ABC will be meeting.
Great, thank you. Do you need anything else from us?
I'll just, no, I'll select your location for you, if you don't mind, in the middle school. And you're going to do it at 6:00 or following the hearing?
I think following. Yeah, I follow, want to listen to people.
So I'm not going to post a time for you, I'm just going to post your location and then it will, you'll commence following the budget hearing.
Yep.
Perfect. And probably this week, I think we said we could get it done that quickly, we will send out a fresh budget to everybody.
Thank you.
So we know where we're going to end up today.
Again, thank you all for your...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Diligence and service.
That's my budget, bro.
It is, it's been great, involved throughout.
Hey, can you pick Garth up for the January 7th meeting?
All right, so Mrs. Dealey?
It'd be my pleasure.
You are next on our agenda.
All right, so this is my first time sharing a board report with the new format where you've seen the report ahead of time, so I'm not going to just read through it, because hopefully you've seen it and you've seen all the great things that continue to happen at the ECLC. What I do want to do is just kind of highlight, under the MTSFB progress, I made a statement about the challenging behaviors we continue to see. I really wanted to just, again, be pretty transparent about what's happening at the ECLC, because I, I am worried. I did create just sort of some notes to keep my brain, just again, to sort of revisit it, what are we doing, is there more we can do? Are we serving all the children well and are we taking care of our staff? So as I kind of thought about those, created a document, I'm not going to read through the whole thing, but I just think it's important, so... So the statement I made in my board report was that we face daily challenges related to tier three behavior. So again, we look at behavior, tier one are those kids that come to school and they are able to follow our expectations well. Tier two are students that need more support, they might have a school counselor group, they might get informal occupational therapy, they need a bit more. And then tier three are really significant behavioral needs that require individualized behavior plans, one-on-one support. We usually have wraparound services where we're talking to doctors, we're talking to outside resources to support these students. And those are the students that are really challenging us. So the demand for staffing to meet these intensive needs just remains problematic, and it really does impact all the students and the staff. So again, we, you know, we're committed to providing the IEP service hours and maintaining safe classrooms and respectful learning, but there is a huge strain with the small population of students. So why, I think that's, you know, we're all saying why, and there's a list of reasons there, I'm not going to go over that again, you know, we, and again, that's kind of theorizing. We can, we can theorize and theorize, but it's like, we don't even have time to theorize, honestly, because we're so busy with these kids. You know, what can help? And I think we're doing a lot of things. We've really prioritized social-emotional learning, we've incorporated play and movement, we've got the outdoor classroom, we're getting kids outside. You know, we build, really, we're good at strong relationships, we're good at offering lots of tools, calming spaces, and we, you know, always advocate to make sure that we're not asking kids to do things that aren't developmentally sound practices. However, despite that, you know, we still have to acknowledge that we have some limitations in, with the current resources and the need for support for those students. So just some, a few urgent concerns, and again, I, I want to share these challenges, but it's a fine line between, I want to maintain the confidentiality, because it is a small group of students, so I'm speaking cautiously, but I also want to accurately depict what's happening at the ECLC. And, you know, really share the, kind of the urgency and the profound impact that it's having every day. So again, we have limited support systems at the ECLC, BES and BMS have a behavior program, they have a pathways program for students with more complicated needs. The ECLC, we don't have those, so the, it falls to the grade level case manager, it falls to the paraprofessionals, it's falling to the teachers, and they're stretched. And so when you're managing sort of a, a small group of children with very big needs, you know, that's going to impact the kids that are showing up every day to do what they, they need to be doing. The disruptions to the classroom, again, you have a student, we'll regulate them, take them to the classroom and think, okay, they're ready to learn, and, you know, really quickly it can turn, and other students are then seeing the hitting, the screaming, swearing, throwing objects, and that requires removal of that student. If we can't get that student to remove, be removed, we're removing the entire class and that student stays, because sometimes that's the, the more safe way of managing it. And as you can imagine, you know, the learning at that point is very, is disruptive, disrupted. So staffing, again, we have students that are not in the classroom because it is so disruptive, so they're working in the resource room, which is taking then that staff that typically supports multiple children in the classroom, they are now in the resource room with, with that small group, so it's, and there, there are some kids that are requiring two grownups with them throughout the day. So again, it's, leaves other students in classrooms understaffed. The staff, I mean, they are, they are amazing, but they're tired, they're tired, and it's, you know, again, our grade level case manager has a paraprofessional, that paraprofessional is not working in that, that context typically, and that's Courtney Irvine, she would typically pull students to do small group instruction, math, reading, writing. She does some self-regulation groups and whatnot, but she's, she's pretty much just a full-time behavior coach working with this small population of students. Our counselor, you know, was super excited, we got the... Our counselor, you know, was super excited, we got that full-time counselor this year, thank goodness, but she's essentially all morning working as a, in the role really of a paraprofessional, helping just a small, that small cohort of students be regulated. And again, it's just like, we need another set of hands. Many times, they're outnumbering us at times, so it's, it's tricky. And what other, what also is happening with our school counselor, she's then sort of having to do damage control, so a student sees an outburst, right? You can imagine how upsetting that is for a small person, they don't understand it. So now, the school counselor's going into the, the classroom, doing some lessons, some explaining, calling families, this is what your son or daughter may have seen, so again, it just has that ripple effect. And then our BCBA, you know, again, is providing behavior plans for these students, but the behavior plans that they create are very detailed and intricate and require consistency, and we're not able to do that at this point, because we don't have consistent people to do it, or even enough people to do it, so. And then incident reports, we have seen an increase of accident reports, so that's of great concern. So then I just explain again the impact, and then just talk about moving forward, and you know, we're gonna, we'll keep trying, we're gonna, you know, keep showing up every day and, and working with these little people who, you know, really have, it's, have these neurodiverse differences, and it's not, I'll say, parents are working with us, they are trying, there's limited services outside of, you know, in the, in the medical field for these kiddos to get the support they need, but it's not that families aren't, aren't doing those things. So, again, you know, I always like to fall to the research, and, you know, it does say early intervention, if we can support these kids now when they're at the ECLC, they are so much more likely to have better outcomes academically and socially as they get older. So, you know, as outlined in my report, we have a lot of successes happening, I'm super proud of the Young Athletes Program that's happening Saturday mornings, our community outreach, I showed some pictures of the staff, you know, they're dancing at the, Dancing with the Berries and Stars, where, you know, we were at trunk or treat with our Lego display, we have our Polar Express event coming up Saturday, we have students singing at the soiree Friday, they're also singing at the Riverside Home here in town, so there's still so much great things happening, but I just feel like it's, I want to ensure that that all continues, and we have an environment where the students, all students can, can thrive academically, socially, and emotionally, so I just wanted to sort of highlight that portion of, of my, of my report.
Do kids ever get sent home?
Yes.
Oh, well.
That's a hard question.
Once a week?
Student dependent. It really, there's so many variables, it's, it's hard to, to say.
Are we, is there anything legal that bars us from sending kids home for behavior issues?
Sometimes that, that's dependent on if they have an IEP or not, that's a different set of rules.
So kids that don't have an IEP, you could send them home for behavior issues?
I felt like that was gonna help solve the behavior issues, sometimes.
Oh, I don't think it'll, yeah, I don't think it's, you're solving the behavior issues, but I'm wondering if, now that you're raising the concern of safety to the teachers and disrupting of class and safety of the rest of the other kids in the class, if a handful of kids can be sent home and removed from the setting so that the rest of them can continue with their education in a safe setting, and let the parents do the parenting, is that, is that a?
We meet with these parents, they come in, you know, and they, again, we're, we're asking them, suggesting to them, you know, have you, have you met with a behaviorist? Have you met with a neurologist? Have you met with, have you met with, and I will say that they, they do those things, the parents are, are trying really hard to get their students the, the help that they need.
With those kids, those parents that you're partnering with and are trying to help, have you seen progress with those kids, or are they still misbehaving? In general, like, I haven't asked specifics.
It tends, depends on the day, I mean, there's like moments where we, I just looked at some data on a student, and I was like, we had two weeks where we saw some really upward movement, and then, you know, it dropped off pretty quickly.
So was that child removed from the setting of the school, or just?
Sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
Again, it's hard, I, I'm being careful in my, the way I answer to protect the confidentiality of, of these students. I believe they wake up every day and want to come to school and do their best.
I, listen, I love kids, regardless of if they misbehave or don't misbehave, but I under, also think that there are fifteen other kids in that class that need to learn, and teachers and paraprofessionals that need to be safe.
I agree.
And if a kid cannot keep himself or herself from hitting a teacher, or hitting another kid, or throwing such a tantrum that the entire class has to be removed from a classroom, I think for the good of the many, the good of the ones sometimes needs to be.
It's usually a stagger, so out of the classroom, then they go to a small, you know, they might go to Kathy Clark's room, they might go to the school counselor's room, sometimes they go into what we call the green room, that space where they go to do their, you know, again, we're co-regulating with them, and again, that could take two people in there with them, co-regulating with them, so it's sort of a, you know, and then if we get to that space, and still these students can't regulate, then we, you know, and typically we have made, we've been proactive, made the call home and said, you know, we're, this is what we're trying, this is what we're doing, but heads up.
Well, and sometimes sending, I'm, I'm just guessing, that sometimes sending, right, become, they realize and recognize that there's a reward system of, I get to leave this environment when a certain behavior, I do a certain behavior, or more than that, and so I see what you're saying about the safety, because of course we would want to remove someone from, whether adult or child, from a situation that could cause others around them harm, but for adolescents, especially at that age, I can assume that they find that sometimes to be a benefit, and would repeat that behavior because of that.
Exactly.
Well, the child might, right, but I think the, the parents that have to all of a sudden come get their kid at school and disrupt their work-life because the child is not behaving at school, you know, getting threatened by Ms. Deely, if I'm a kid, is gonna be different than getting dad.
Deely doesn't threaten children.
Well, not threatened, but, but, but my, my behavior corrected by Ms. Deely is different than having mom and dad try, do it at home, and I think I might listen if mom and dad are mad at me and said.
I would say that all of these parents are incredibly stressed, and I'm.
Sure.
I, I don't think we, they are incredibly burdened without us sending their children home, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do that and don't do that, but I, I don't think
But also, and.
That's gonna solve, right, I, I want to teach these students to be regulated, to teach them to be students, and that doesn't happen when they're, when they're home. Again, if they're so regulated that they are throwing chairs and whatnot, then that's, that's different, but there's, again, there's this window, right, there's this big spectrum of behavior, and it's, it's just not.
But anecdotally, I'm also hearing from other parents that have kids in the classrooms that are trying to sit there and learn, and have their, their classes completely disrupted because of one individual in the classroom at times, you know, and now you're telling me you're using two adults for one child, you know, at some point, I just, I don't know, it's, it's hard, I know, I can't, I can't imagine being in your shoes and then being in those paraprofessional shoes and those teachers' shoes trying to conduct a normal way.
Well, and we can only send a child home so many times, right, before you then, if they don't have an individual education plan, then you are legally incumbent to look at, why is this child not successful in school? And, you know, you have to go down the road of that evaluation process. If, if you've tried multiple rounds of intervention and they're still not able to access their regular education classroom, then they become a student in need of service. So, if they are school age in New Hampshire, which is six, and at this point of the school year, many kindergarteners are, it's incumbent on the district to come up with another plan, and, you know, if they can't access their classroom, then you start going down the continuum of public school versus a different placement option, et cetera. So, we try to do everything we can to keep our students in our home schools, in our community, you know, with their peers, before we look at other options. So that's where it, it gets difficult to answer that question of, you know, we'll just send them home. You know, these are little people with not great communication, and we know when kids can't get their wants and needs met, then they often exhibit that through behavior when they, you know, so it's, it's very layered when the littles are having struggles.
Sure. And I, you know, and again, I'm not advocating for, I'm advocating for the other littles in the classroom as well, you know, that are being traumatized by.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm here, because I, I agree, I agree more, you know, it's, most kids, right, ninety percent, even more, are showing up each day and doing what they should be doing, they're growing and learning, but, you know, it's hard to, hard for us as grown-ups to watch.
So I think we're hearing an advocacy for potential, I know this budget cycle, we were saying, not adding, we're doing our best to be as fiscal, physically responsible as, as possible, but I guess you could look at that in a different way of fiscally responsible, because you could say that some of these behaviors, if not addressed initially, will become, I'm not putting a number on a child, but expensive, budgetary, impactful, things later, and I do know that the old, services for children as they get older do not get cheaper, right? They increase in price, so is, is, I do see that the, a behavioral coach role description is, is included in that, is not.
Because Courtney Irvine is working in that capacity now, so, and again, what that has done then is, is because she would be Kathy Clark's paraprofessional and run small groups and help Kathy, who already has a caseload of ten students, right, which is a lot in kindergarten, and we're seeing, of course, an uptick in referrals, so that number's easily gonna be fourteen within the next few months. So she, so typically, Courtney's role is to support Kathy with, with that caseload, but Courtney is supporting students, this behavioral group, because she's working in the capacity base of behavior coach now, so Kathy is managing her caseload single-handedly.
Is the position being adequately compensated for the work the individual's doing?
None of them are.
So I would say currently, right, we don't have a behavior program at the ECLC, so this individual who is hired as a grade-level paraprofessional is addressing the behavioral needs of multiple students. So, we often hire paraprofessionals all throughout the year for special education students and sometimes not-identified students to address a specific need. I would suggest an intermediary step would be to at least look at hiring an additional paraprofessional in the here and now, so that we can focus some attention on the behavioral needs of these particular students. You know, it, it's challenging, because we've already talked about positions, so to, so you kind of have two different roles or avenues you can take here.
Well, I guess that's what I'm, I'm saying, is I guess it's two different questions, I'm not necessarily discussing whether we should have more, I'm asking, if the, if an individual is not doing the job they were hired for, are they being adequately compensated for the job that they're doing? And if they're not, then we should, we should be looking at that.
So she is addressing the behavioral needs of the students at the ECLC, not necessarily running a school-wide behavioral coach program, but I think Laura would advocate and say that that is what's needed, you know, that's what she had shared in the initial budget presentation.
Well, I agree too with what Carrie said in the fact that sometimes it's more economical to spend a little bit more money, and, you know, if, if it, if at the end of the day it looks like there's a staffing issue, we should have additional staffing to help take care of the students in need, it's, if we can do it in-house, it's certainly gonna be cheaper than if we have to take a student and move them out of district and pay for these services. So, again, I, I think sometimes it's, it's not that we're, I don't want to use the term wasting money, because that's not a fair assumption, but sometimes spending a little bit more mon, money becomes more economical for the, for the taxpayers and whole, so.
And you, it would be presented as an, as an interim, not interim, but not temporary? God, what's the word I'm looking for? That, this is for a period of time to address the immediate needs, is that what you, what you mean by?
So, once we, the way the collective bargaining agreement for the paraprofessionals is written, right, once you hire the position, you kind of own it.
Right.
Unless you're proposing you don't need it in the, in the future, then you would riff your last hired person unless there was somebody else with.
Yeah, if you think that we're gonna add a temporary behavior coach at the ECLC.
Well, that's what I was trying to understand.
Next year, she's gonna come back and say, oh, guess what, we don't need a behavior coach anymore, that's never going to happen.
Well, I think the thing is.
Which is why I was saying, I think an intermediary step would be to hire somebody to manage those handful of behavioral needs in the here and now, and not necessarily be hiring and advic, and creating a new, additional new position.
Well, couldn't an intermediary step also be, if a kid doesn't have an IEP, and they are throwing such a fit that they're causing potential bodily harm to a teacher or another student, to send that kid home without, not, not sometimes, always, and then if they should be on an IEP, they should be on an IEP, but if they're not, it's the parent's problem.
So when you do that.
Can that be a suspension?
So when you do that, that's what I was trying to speak to a little bit ago, when you continuously do that, if the child is school age, so if they've already turned six, it's incumbent on us as the public school system to provide an adequate education. So, then you continue to send a kiddo home, the parent's gonna say, hey, you know, you are in my district, you have to educate my child.
If a kid at the middle school punches a kid, right, and you suspend them, is that, how is that, that's different somehow?
So if they're a, if they're, nope, so if they're a student on IEP or not, which, which one do you want me to answer?
Not.
Both. So if they're not, then yes, you would suspend them, however, once you get to multiple days and they're not accessing their classroom instruction, you would then call a referral meeting, and the team would have a conversation around what is going on with this student, why are they not successful, and you would, nine, nine point nine percent of the time, then conduct an individual evaluation to figure out, like, is there a social-emotional issue here, you know, or whatever the case may be, you know, is there truly a, an academic weakness that has gotten in the way, et cetera? So, most often, when a child isn't accessing their education, they end up qualifying as a student in need of services. So, it, once a student is on an IEP, every time they miss ten days of instruction, legally, you're incumbent to bring your team in and have what's called a manifestation meeting, and review the IEP and make a determination as to whether something needs to change, is this the right placement, do we have the right services, et cetera, you, and determine whether the behavior is a result of their disability, and then you have to look at the IEP. So, you can't just continuously send kids home without having a plan of action.
Oh, how many times can you send them home before you need a plan of action?
Well, so if, if they're on an IEP, it's at ten days.
Not on IEP.
So I would say, even if they're not on IEP, if a child is missing ten days of instruction due to their behavior, you would then refer them for an evaluation.
How many kids have missed ten days of instruction due to their behavior issues at the ECLC?
I don't, I don't.
Zero? Have you sent a kid home ten times?
I don't feel like I can, there are students that aren't coming for a full day because of their behavior.
But I mean.
They already have a reduced day, is what they're saying.
They have a reduced day already.
Yep.
To prevent us from having sort of, just send him home, send him home, send him home.
Okay, and it, so, so the reduced day is the plan, is that, and is that, is that?
So you could look at that as every, you know.
Is a half-day suspension?
A half-day suspension every day, I mean, if you want to look at it that way, that's not the way I, we're looking at that.
Well, does that kid have a, is he on, not, I can't say, but I mean, like, all right, in theory, if you, if you reduce a kid's class time by half, is that kid on an IEP or is it just a normal student?
They, it, you can do it for any child, but it has to be for a specified period of time and reviewed by the team regularly, you can't do it indefinitely.
And do you find that works?
At times, for students who need to build stamina, or they need to, you know, improve their communication skills, or get on, or run a very specific behavior plan to increase, you know, the, the positive reactions and decrease the negatives, you have to shrink their environment and their opportunities for, you know, lack of success and reward the successes.
Can I just, go ahead. I would like to throw out there that we can be talking about increasing staffing for a small group of students, or we could get very quickly to the place where we're talking about increasing staffing for one student, and so I think it is more economical and more. And so I think it is more economical and more financially responsible to start with. Let's increase it to see if we can ward off the need for individualized paraprofessional support.
Absolutely.
Speaking of additional in current staff, how many are, do they, did any of the staff have the non-hands-on CPI training to de-escalate? How many go through?
We have a lot at the ECLC, I think we have.
I think there were sixteen, sixteen staff in your building, that, and more have requested it across the district, not just at the ECLC, to do just the de-escalation, non-hands-on portion of CPI.
The worst part is the hands-on part, but do you need more folks for that in case the kids are physical?
We currently have thirty-six staff members across the district trained in CPI, the physical restraint portion of it. I would say that that is a, is a high number, and I feel pretty confident in that, we're okay with that. But I, no harm, no foul to train more, just you run risk of people putting hands-on when they shouldn't, right? Because they're trained, so I like to play a fine line with that.
Sure, of course.
And age-wise, at the ECLC, it really is a hands-off approach.
Yeah. Or when you need to.
On the other side, if staff are getting sent to the hospital, it's time for hands-on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else to that uplifting report?
I usually just like to keep it upbeat, but tonight I'm keeping it real.
Thank you for telling the truth.
You know, and I just want the public watching to know that this is not a Barrington-specific phenomenon.
No, I actually went and visited another school in New Hampshire that has the same setup. It's just preschool and kindergarten. It was, it was great for many reasons, and it's, it's the same, you know, it's. And, you know, I'm in a lot of different groups that post, I need help, what are you doing for this? Sharing information, and I feel like every time I get on there, it's like kindergarten, 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 behavior in kindergarten, it is just, it, it really is, and, yeah.
I mean, Stratford Learning Center has created a program for the K to two population just to meet this need across the Seacoast area.
So do you need a vote to add that position? I didn't think so.
If we're talking behavior coach, yes, because we don't have that position. If we're talking about para, no, it's more informative.
Okay.
Of course, like, so it's like on paper what it would look like. In reality, it will look like Courtney, because she has relationships with those students. She's, she's highly trained, I mean, it wouldn't make sense to have another person do that. So Courtney will stay in that role of supporting that small group of students, you know? I mean, so she is essentially the behavior coach in real time on paper. She's a paraprofessional, so if there were a new person, that person would then support the students with Kathy and her caseload.
The next item's quick and easy, just a reminder and a request that we continue the meetings once we shift to the hearing at the middle school, so we don't set up and take down, okay? Perfect, wonderful, and correspondence should be plural. We got an additional one after we had run the packets.
I thought I didn't.
So you have John Lines is submitting for retirement, and also Kathy Damon, who works in the vest program as a paraprofessional at the elementary school.
Any one, my motion took some place.
Motion?
Regretfully.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you both for serving the district.
And we have the Oyster River tuition contract. So I think the, the piece that was cha- not challenging, but different from the first ten-year ago was the tuition rate had this like graduated, you know, piece in there. And so now, just like the Dover contract, it's based on the DOE twenty-five, you know, actual pupil costs. So we're not gonna have these, potentially these huge jumps year to year. And so we cleaned up some of the, uh, special ed language was kind of sprinkled all throughout the contract, but it has not changed since we met on it last spring.
I didn't see anything in there. We, I thought we had indicated we wanted some language inserted that said that if Oyster River decided they wanted to change the, the means by which they meaningfully delivered education, that we would be able to weigh in. And I think that, I think the example Dave gave at the time was not just a COVID situation, but something like, we decided we're gonna add Nottingham as a, added another town to our, we'd have some recourse at that point.
I thought we did put language in there.
Did you put it in? I mean, I'm gonna miss it, I skimmed.
I'll go back through and double-check, but I'm pretty.
The language I found is if you, if they bring in a new town and offer a lower rate.
Right.
We'll get the benefit of the lower rate, that's one part I did see.
Yep.
I think the, the.
The intention is.
The intention was that if all of a sudden my class sizes went from sixteen to twenty-six, we could say, wait a minute, that's not the what you sold us on.
I do recall that, I thought we could put language in about that.
Yeah, well, it's funny when.
So I would actually suggest that this get, go forward to the. Yeah, that's, Jason just pointed that out, but Gar's talking more about if they change, like, how they deliver service, or how they, yeah, not the actual cost or the rate.
The cost is meaningful, for sure, I mean, that's a, yes.
So I'll go back through it and reach back out to Dr. Schaffs if I don't see that in there. But the more I thought about this, I think this should go to the Oyster River Board first, right? As the receiving school, that's what Dover had suggested that they do it there, so that's going to Dover first. So I would table the, your vote and signature for now, and that'll give me some time to double-check that piece.
And the other concern was the, Carrie, you had.
Oh, yes, but I had neglected to see the email from the twentieth about. How they calculated the tuition rate and the justification, and did, it did decrease by a little bit, I saw, because wasn't, didn't they come in at seven point something, and now it's at six point three five? That was what the, the email had said, that I had thought when we initially met.
The, so the total voted appropriations increased by six three five, not, not the.
Well, no, so the tuition rate did go up by the seven two four. Oh.
Yeah.
Their overall budget went up.
Their overall appropriations, yeah.
I read that very quick, because I just read that, I missed it, and I just read that tonight, okay.
All right, so is there a motion to table that till another meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
You can pick, Emery.
Yeah. Dealer's choice.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, please, Dan.
We put you later in the meeting, and then you're here.
First time the school board, or the library board had met on the same day, sorry. Are you hearing me over there? I guess, I think I'm on. Good. Our last, the eleventh of December, remember, is our school board, select board collaboration meeting. So just a reminder for myself and for the public, too. Our last meeting, we discussed mostly budget. Let me, let me kind of go over this quickly. Our budget gets set differently, because yours is really focused. Ours is pretty spread out, so we have police, we have rec, we have all sorts of things. So we do ours a little differently. In the past, on Tuesdays, the ABC met, the department heads came in, presented their part of the budget. They were offered suggestions, questions. Then they came back in on Monday for the select board meeting and presented the same thing with some of that input. And that tedious process, but it, it worked fairly well. But this year, we did something different. The department heads now just come to the ABC, they discuss it, the ABC works on this and then comes up with the budget. And the department heads don't present to the select board until after all this ABC met. So we had a joint meeting with the ABC and the select board yesterday. Just kind of reference, last year, we had a nine million dollar budget. I know, I know that's chump change to you guys, but hey, a million here, a million there, and you're talking about real money eventually. The department heads came in initially with an estimate of a ten million, three hundred and nine thousand dollar budget. The town administrator worked with the department heads, brought that down to nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight, pretty significant decrease. And then the ABC.
Nine, nine million.
Nine million, I'm sorry.
I was like, wow, that was some.
Nine million, nine hundred, nine million, nine hundred from ten million, three hundred. And then the ABC brought it down a little bit further, to the presentation they made last night was nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven. And that comes out to about seven point eight three. Select board has some changes to that. It's not gonna make too much difference in the overall presentation of the budget, because we took something, they wanted to put some things into warrant articles. We've, the select board, I think, has taken those out of them and put into the operating budget. So the operating budget's gonna come up to be something like seven, seven point nine percent increase over last year's budget. Of that, about three and a half percent is the, of that increase is based on the library, which is already voted on and is a done deal. So I think that's how we're gonna present our budget. We're also gonna present comparison with the default budget, and if we do that, we'll show what services will be missing from that. We've included a couple of police officers, some more work for the fire maintenance, the highways and that sort of thing. So we're going to present, we're gonna try to communicate very well what it is that we had for an increase, what will happen if you don't, don't approve these things, what we're going to be missing from services. These are the services we think we need. That's kind of what we did, and how it worked for us. Incidentally, just as an aside for Rick's question, if people are not properly compensated, my suggestion would be that they're teachers, so they're not properly compensated just by virtue of being a teacher. That's personal opinion, not the board's position.
Thank you, Dan.
Joe. Okay. So our first item is our van that we have out here. So we did have an RSA that does require CDLs for driving that. What I wanted to do is get that inspected and go ahead and try to sell it, if everybody was in agreement with that. Pretty much where we are with that. I don't think there's a whole lot of, that's wrong with it. We did the brakes a year ago. It's been sitting for a month and a half out there right now. I went out tonight and it started right up first try, so the van's the van. Is that RSA, refresh my memory, but that RSA, does that, does that only apply to school students? Or any kids being hauled in the van?
Public schools.
Schools.
Public.
Public schools.
It's very expansive and very restrictive.
Does a rec need it?
Any school-based.
Yeah.
That was my question.
Does the rec need it?
Does the rec?
Not to my knowledge, RSA is specific to schools.
I mean, I can.
I forgot, they only drive Mercedes over there.
Yeah, they have, they got the nice one, I don't know if they want this, the Dodge.
Does anyone have a reason why we're gonna keep an old van around?
Nope.
Make a motion to sell the van.
Second.
Any discussion?
Wendy and I talked.
It's absolutely disappointing that they passed such a restrictive and damaging law. We're gonna be losing out on opportunities for our students, and it's a great disappointment.
It is disappointing. I, I have heard from a couple other superintendents, I was saying to Joe today. Katie and I reviewed the RSA together, and it, it seemed very clear to us, but I, I do think it's worth one quick email to legal to ask the question. There are a couple superintendents that I have spoken with who said that if it is under fourteen passengers, that they, they are still using theirs without CDL licenses. So I'm gonna poke at it one more time, but we have to send it to get inspected either way.
We don't need to vote to get it inspected, so.
Right.
Then never mind, I retract my motion.
How many seats does that van have? It has fourteen right now, but we can make it ten.
Seriously, without being facetious, we could take, because it's wheelchair accessible, we can take the back row out and still utilize it. So if, if that is the case, when we read the RSA, it did not read that way.
It does not.
But it, to me, is worth asking, that's a specific question.
Yeah, double-check.
The problem, the problem goes back to is how long before that.
I also don't want to purchase another van. I don't want to have to come back and purchase another van.
Seven thousand dollars.
Oh, we have, that van has saved us so much money in transportation over the years.
And that's my point, if you can, you know, if, if the, the legal comes back and says, hey, if that's only a twelve-passenger van, you don't need a CDL, take two seats out and keep the thing.
Absolutely.
Oh, one hundred percent, because it's a lifesaver throughout the district.
It doesn't indicate a number of kids or passengers, it just indicates school use.
Yeah.
Okay.
It just says school use, which is.
And I guess that's why we need legal.
Exactly, so I, I do know two other districts who have said to me in the past week, we're still using ours, it's under fourteen passenger.
That just means that if fourteen kids make the softball team, you gotta cut two of them.
That's it. Let's just paint rec on the side of it and move. I mean, the van owes us absolutely nothing. Well, I just hate to see it go away. Me too. That's seven thousand dollars, I'm sorry, people won't hear me. That seven thousand dollars gets chewed up in just a few bus rides, so.
Well, there's a, there's a multi-layered impact, you know? One, it impacts our pathways program, our students that go out and learn how to be in the community and go grocery shopping and daily living skills, but also it does, we use it so much for transition opportunities, but also the fun stuff, right? When middle schoolers come down to the ECLC and, you know, band comes over from the middle to, to BES, and like, there are just so many internal wonderful opportunities.
I mean, I wonder what the rationale was. It's not like I read on M U R, like, oh my god, there was all these kids hurt when a, you know, little school bus went off the road that a teacher was driving to a soccer game. I mean, what's the, that just sounds so stupid.
There are like most legislation for some unique situations.
And then, and I mean, it's just like.
Proposed by no one in education.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Well, and they're couching little pieces of legislation in, within bills, which is why we have to post this eighteen-by-twenty-four-inch piece of paper of.
Because they tend to get approved, rather than creating a new bill, if you make edits, it, you tend to get approved.
Anyways.
We're moving on, Joe?
So the next one on the list here is Velocity EHS. What this is, is it's a digital software for managing our SDS sheets, our safety data sheets. We, I, this is one of the things when I came on board, I started looking to after we got settled in and everything. And we're really not in compliance with our safety data sheets. So what this does here is, this would allow us a couple of administration, administrators in there. Then we have our department heads underneath that, which would actually manage their section of the MSDS or the SDS sheets. And then from there, everybody in the district is actually a user. For instance, one of the kids gets Elmer's glue in his eye. We need a safety data sheet to be able to provide that to the nurse, so the nurse can say, nope, he'll be all right. All we have to do is wash it, it doesn't have to go to the hospital, so on and so forth. This here will do that in a software format. It'll be, it can be on your phones, in your laptop. It's a touch of a button.
What's the cost?
So, cost of this is, it's, they have this based out on a three-year term. So there's two ways that they do it. They, if they upload all the information for us and everything like that, they're gonna charge us an extra three grand. We're not gonna do that. The upfront cost for year one is three thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. This is what they sent me, there's always room for negotiation, so I think I can whittle it down even more. Year two is three thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars, and then year three is three thousand, five hundred and fifty-five. And I believe after that, it just stays pretty much status quo after that. What this does is it has an e-binder, where that e-binder has all of your SDS sheets in it. So as soon as there's an automatic update somewhere throughout the course of the world, they automatically send that to you. You click it, it goes to e-binder, it's all updated. You're not printing another sheet, keeping in that big orange book for the state to come in and see. So the next thing that we have is we're due up for accreditation. This is the first thing that they look at when they come through the door. They say, where's your MSDS sheet? Look, and what we do is we'll keep one in the main office, and then what that book will do is direct them to this. When it directs them to this, they go in, they see, oh, you got Velocity, great, perfect. Click on, see if there's any update there, who's who, and then we're all in compliance. So we've, with this system, if, let's just say you're not around, and I'll, I'll go back to a couple of years ago, we had the glycol leak in the, in the middle school. Right. And it took us a while to try to figure out, to finally get somebody from the company to come down and go, here's the MSDS sheets, because facilities manager wasn't around, that wasn't hands-on at that point. So.
So it took us a while to get this. So my point being is with this system, with the principal, we'll have been able to go get this and said, here's the glycol, and we could have looked at that.
So we're going to be at the point with that where you'd be able to almost look that up yourself because you're a user. So that MSDS sheet would be in there for you to take a look at, so you'd be able to view it.
Do you have, do you have money in your budget to implement this? Or are you asking us for money to implement?
We can find that.
We'll find that. We, we have that, but.
Can you back up for one second? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not embarrassed to admit, I have no idea what an SDS sheet is. So what?
Safety data sheet.
Okay, so in practical, what, how do you use these and how we assisted up to this point without making it a?
So in here, there's a whole slideshow on here that shows you the safety data sheet. What it is, is it actually shows you what's in there for the breakdown of the chemicals and it shows you what's harmful. So skull and crossbones is bad, bad, bad. You know? And then with your other data sheets, you know, it should say like, made of, like, we use a biodegradable Belgian cleaning Delta Ultra. You can drink it and you're not going to get sick. But the safety data sheet on that is it's a green product, so you're able to print that off and it will say to the nurse, okay, nobody's, we don't want to.
So what is this, like every substance that we bring into the school, we have an SDS on?
Supposed to. That's why we don't have people coming with any home stuff.
Okay.
Yep.
And so like if a kid is exposed to some substance that we burn at the school, you refer to this thing and that way it tells you what you should, what you should do with the kid?
And with this here, say, yep, well, it'll tell you what it is, if you want to call chemical control or poison control. Or the kid has something and we're calling the fire department right off the bat, or if it's something where it's just an eyewash or anything like that.
Well, I understand, thank you. In that particular case, they were going to ask four hundred kids if anybody felt bad and I'm like, that's not a good idea at all. I don't like that idea. I'm like, if a teacher, if a teacher knows that a kid doesn't feel good, we'll bring that kid over separate, but not getting up the ambulances here for four hundred kids.
So you're asking permission, you're just doing it?
I just want to make you aware of it if we, if you're all on board with that, we'd like to move forward with it, just so that we come up to date with our accreditation and everything like that. Things are so far behind at the state right now, we probably won't see that for a couple of years. It was supposed to be next year. We probably won't see that for two to three years.
Although we've been audited in every area imaginable this year, so it wouldn't surprise me.
Personally, I appreciate the update, but I'm of the opinion that, you know, that's what we hire you people to do and if you're, as long as you're working within the confines of your budgets.
Yep.
You should be doing what you think is best for us and.
And let's stay compliant, yes, let's, let's.
Always, always the right thing.
That's a good quote we all, public schools like to live by. Compliance, yes.
We should bring us, but the collaboration.
So next one on here is EMS. This is a company, so if we go back a couple of meetings ago, we were talking about Alpha Solutions and we took that money out of the budget. We've gone and looked at these guys here and these, this company here is willing to come in and do an assessment of our district, of our buildings, what we have. There's no upfront money. What happens with this is we sign a letter of intent and there's no money that exchanges hands. When there's a project come out, that's when they make their money and it's ten percent. So say we do a lighting project here at the SAU and it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, their cost for that is ten thousand, uh, ten percent. So out of that, they would get fifteen thousand dollars and that's how they get paid on their stuff.
We did this, yes.
We didn't do this, this.
My tenure here, we've done this.
Siemens has been ten years.
Yeah, it hasn't been done for ten years and they've never.
But what have we changed?
Well, they've never provided us with a catalogued list of what we own. So that was when we brought forward in the budget, like, hey, let's look at Alpha Solutions, we want to be able to QR code and have this list of per building. They're going to come in and do that as part of their oversight of suggested projects. So again, we don't have to do anything. They get paid once we choose to then start.
Well, if you're signing a letter of intent, you're saying that if you do something, you are, okay, well, there.
Yep. And the slideshow for that there is in here, what the company has done, what they've done, what they've worked with, the different schools, letters of reference and so on and so forth. So.
This felt valuable to me because think about how many times we've talked about what had been done and gee, we thought that was part of that process and a lot of things were missed over the years.
Right.
We don't have an accurate catalog anywhere currently of what we actually own and we, we have a lot of assets.
And this will give us a record going forward. So, you know, when I hit the lottery tomorrow and say, thank you very much, it's been a blast, see you later, I'm going to Aruba.
Are you warning us if?
But no. But, you know, so the next person that comes in line, they're going to have that catalog there for them instead of having to go around to figure out what's what, what's here, what's not here. I'm still finding stuff that we have come across, which.
And that's a problem, because even if in a perfect world, when you did hit the lottery and was going to head to Aruba, you'd at least stick around long enough to bring somebody in to try to get them up to speed. But, you know, sometimes, you know, you know, what you think is important, somebody else might not or vice versa.
You always want to do the best thing for the district.
Right.
You know?
So I guess I'm curious, what, I mean, I understand we need the need of cataloguing what we own, but what are these guys doing for us other than cataloguing what we own?
So this is going to be a whole shebang. So say we go ahead and we decide that we want to do a project.
Yeah.
We need something done. They're the ones that will take and set up the RFP, the RFQ, collect the bids, bring the bids in and bring them to us, to us, and then we open the bids and then we decide who we want for a contractor. So all of that goes away, there's nothing on our plate for that there to have that RFQ done.
Sort of like a clerk of the works type of thing?
It wouldn't even be that because they're not getting, they're getting paid for the project that they're overseeing. For instance, they did one project in Littleton. The company that went in and did all the HVAC for the buildings wanted to get their last check. These guys made them, had the checks and balances in place where they said, uh-uh, sorry, we're not giving you that last sixty thousand dollars because you're not done yet. If it's us managing those accounts and everything like that and we're supposed to be doing our due diligence, yeah, we'll try to do the best we can. But these guys here are the ones that are actually making sure those checks and balances are in place.
I noticed in the report that you provided from AMC that there was quite a lot of reporting that it would be like, that's like high-level reporting on the status of the systems and projections for the future as far as usage and then not just energy savings, but savings overall for future projects and things like that, some of the reporting. I think it's great. I don't know where the board is leaning, but a lot of this information would be great information to discuss as a whole when we do our board retreats at the end of the year as we're evaluating. I think it's hard to maybe digest it at this very second.
Yep.
Because there's, we're talking hypotheticals, but I conceive value in these discussions as we've struggled with that, some of those topics in the past when we're talking at a high-level, five-year planning states. Do you feel like that's another area that you'd plan to utilize some of this and would that be coming from you or from them?
What we'd like to be able to do with this here is like, this is be the step one. This is part of like our capital improvement plan moving forward, getting our asset inventory done, them being the ones that are taking over the RFPs, RFQs, bringing us the quotes of legit businesses that are going to be coming in for projects that we do. And then after that, there, that's when, where we were talking about the Alpha Solutions with the QR coding and the Operations Hero. That's when those two companies would come into place. So that, Alpha Solutions, that number would shrink astronomically. And then the Operations Hero would be the management company of the work orders and managing that CIP that we would actually have in place then.
The piece that was exciting for me when we did the meeting was they projected out, you know, here's your piece of equipment and here's the range of years where we think it's going to need repair or replacement. So it just will help us manage our facility expectations moving forward. He actually showed us a plan that he did with another district, so we had asked for that because I think that would be more meaningful than sort of the this is who we are. PowerPoint that is in the packet, we just didn't get it in time to get it to you, but he showed us an actual district that he, with a Gopstown.
Joe, like, looking around the buildings, like, what pieces of equipment aren't you qualified to tell me how much more lifespan is left on them?
So for instance, I can lead you into our next segue with our septic system.
Save the best.
There's something about septic on this agenda.
That's because it's brandy new for you. So there are things out there that you don't know about, that you don't see. This is the stuff that, you know, over at the middle school, a month and a half ago, we had two pumps go down in the, in the pump house of the septic system. We were scrambling to get that back up and running. If we had kind of had an idea in the plan that that was, you know, fifteen, twenty years old, okay, let's take a look at this and see what it is, you know? Other than that, you wouldn't know. Over here at the elementary school, we have an issue going on over there right now with the septic pumps. We're looking at thirty-three years of a system that's been on the wall and in the ground that has never been taken care of. It's never been touched. I've talked to all the contractors that have worked in the buildings and they're like, oh, never, never knew that was there. Nope, didn't touch that. So this is the stuff that this company will come in and give you a list. So, and this is a report that we can run off of you. So in there, say we have five hundred assets and four of those are in red. Once they turn, we fix those and they're no longer red, they turn green, then they're done, they're off the list and then we move forward. You know, it just gives us more control over what we have in district.
So if these guys came in and they identified that the septic system in the elementary school needs to be replaced at some, you know, date future, they'd get ten percent of the project once we put in a new septic, is that the idea?
That would be the idea.
And in any way, shape or form, would this hitch us to them for any potential expansion at the elementary school?
It does not hitch us with them. They may be one of the companies that works with the architect to bring all that together.
But they wouldn't get ten percent of the, they're, they're not necessarily having that, okay?
No.
They identify specific projects and they just get the ten percent of the specific projects you choose to do. You don't have to.
And we don't even have to do any. I mean, it all depends on where we're at. Wanted you to be aware of that.
I really liked the opinion comparison, or option comparison scorecard. I think that was a really impressive.
Yep.
For decision-making, I think that's helpful.
Yeah. Really is. So now for the bad news.
That was, that wasn't the. All right, surprise.
I know you guys love seeing me sit at the table, so I appreciate that.
You're not invited, thanks.
So over at the elementary school, just before the Thanksgiving break, we started having alarms going off for the pump station. So what we do is around that little green fence out back in the ground is the pump station for the, two leach fields for the septics. One pump is making a whole lot of noise and another pump is only going on two amps and there's a leak in one of the elbows and then inside, everything is integrated. This is, you can't even really get parts for the one piece of the equipment that we have. So I reached out to Sebastian's. We have, Wednesday afternoon, we were down here, went down in the hole, checked everything out, this is what we came up with. Magically, whatever happened, whatever wires we hit or anything, everything has kind of gone back to normal.
Oh, great, all right.
It's all fixed.
Bad news, no.
So, so I just wanted to continue with him in case things do go awry. For the two pumps, four floats, new control panel, without pumping the pump station down, the labor of the electrical or installing the pumps, just the materials is seven thousand. And then usually I just take and double that because the labor is usually around the same price as the material. So in order to replace that project, do that project over there, we're looking at approximately fourteen thousand, give or take.
That's actually better than I was expecting.
Yeah, I thought it was going to be, I thought you said double, I thought you thought fourteen thousand for labor and it was twenty-one thousand.
Yep, so.
I thought it was going to be like sixty thou, I thought it was going to be like sixty thousand.
And so we're looking at, and we're going to do a lot of the work, so the electrician, we work with him, running the wires and all that stuff in-house. Same with the septic, if it comes down to it, like the last time, I was the guy in the hole, you know? So it is what it is.
Cool.
Just take care of it, you know? Get it done, keep the cost down as low as possible for the district and taxpayers, but get it fixed so that we're good for another thirty years.
I mean, I don't want a Chevy Chase vacation gum in the dam solution, right? And so you're saying that that amount of money will affect it, right? Like, let's not.
That's good, you had a chicken today, too.
Hollywood vacation, what is that one?
That's vacation, that's.
Christmas vacation, they put gum in the dam?
Yeah, when he goes to the Hoover Dam, so but that, so that's what.
That's Vegas vacation.
Oh, Vegas vacation, sorry. Whatever.
That's like, that is obscure.
No, I knew, but there's like four vacations. All I know is Chevy Chase put some gum somewhere and it did not work. So I just want to make sure that this isn't just a temporary, another temporary, this is really going to address the problems, we're not going to, you don't have to come here and give us bad news.
Right, yeah. So what we're going to do here is we're going to take and pump down the system and clean up the pumps that we have and everything like that. Those pumps, when they come back, we will have those tested. And if they're still good, we'll put them on the shelf and just have those for.
Because I know we're.
QR coded later.
I know we keep saying we're on a budget, you know what I mean, the budget, budget, but that is obviously something that we're not, we don't want just a temporary.
Septic's pretty necessary.
Yeah, septic is very necessary.
We've been spotted a lot of time here just putting it in hand because it's not working.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, Joe?
And then I updated Garth on the sign, if you guys don't care about that, then he can fill you in.
It's awesome.
We trust you.
It's in progress, Joe, something?
The only thing with the sign is, is we're getting close on time and the post is supposed to be in at the end of next week.
Got it.
If we get a nice warm stretch.
It's supposed to be forties all next week.
If it's forties next week, we're going to dig and move and.
Forties. I'm serious, like, seven days of forties.
And we're not illuminating the empty spot anymore, right?
No, sorry about that.
No. No, that was, that was one week. We wanted it shut off because it was just a light shining on nothing.
And it's funny because there's only one light. I don't know where the other light, the other light's been gone since I got here.
All right.
Okay, policies.
So the purchasing policy, it took us some time to get here because we had other policies. We kept running out of time and committee, but the highlighted portion on the second page is the line that we added in conjunction with what the town had already done on their side. So in alignment with Barrington Town policy, vendors and service providers cared by the town of Barrington may be utilized by the Barrington School District without further vetting for up to a year. That is the change on the purchasing policy. And then student transportation, we minimized that to a great degree. So the ones for second reader, the ones that we brought back to committee to, to clear read are one, the ones that we brought back to committee to, to clear up the language around who was the coordinator, et cetera. So, J I C C, we went with the New Hampshire School Board Association recommended policy there, and then EEA, and E A E made the language consistent and more clear with liaison versus provider.
On EEA, didn't we say we were gonna strike on first paragraph, who li, the last sentence?
Yes.
Who live at least, can we just, yeah, could we just strike that?
As we divided.
Transportation for all students.
You got it, because we don't have cycle sidewalks, and we're not a walkable community.
Right.
Should we also be including that we provide transportation for high school?
Hmm?
Yes.
Yep.
So I hear you wanna join policy committee, yeah?
You're always welcome. Make those changes there.
We'll meet during the day, right?
I know. All right, so, okay.
In a couple of these policies, can we fix the capitalization, like, transportation liaison shouldn't be capitalized, superintendents in there a couple of times capitalize.
I thought we should, I thought she got along.
It says Barrington Town on the purchasing town should not be capitalized.
Sure will.
And I'm assuming all the font will then match.
Yes, there's a template, yeah.
As amended, I make a motion to approve a first-read policy DJ and DI, and J I C C, and for second read, EEA and E E A E.
Second.
Any discussion besides what we just had? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, back to our second opportunity for public comment.
I think this applies to all, but especially to education. It seems to me that it's unlikely that we're gonna get more money in the next three or four years, and we're probably gonna increase the cost of everything, so I think we ought to be really careful about cutting this budget too much, thinking we're gonna get through this really quickly, because next year, try to kick things down the road, because next year, I think it's gonna be really a horror show, and after that, at least, at least two more years.
Sorry, it's getting late, that was...
Especially, especially education.
Yeah.
I would suggest that if you have kids throwing...
Slatter date?
Number one, you missed it, Laura, sorry.
I would suggest if you have kids throwing chairs that they might become Olympic basketball coaches or major league umpires, so, remember Billy, or...
Billy Martin.
Yeah, Billy Martin, yep.
Knight, what?
Bobby Knight.
Bobby Knight throwing chairs across the street.
Yeah, he was good at it.
Hallifin Good.
Come on down.
Oh, he's pulling his pants up, this is...
Get that off cam for the wall.
Oh, God.
He is off cam.
The one, the one that I like.
Hi, Dave Tardy. Katie, just wanted to add a couple comments about Joe's EMC, just some flags popping into my mind. If we're, we're getting somebody in to make a list of all our systems, and then rate them, and say which ones need to be replaced, and that person only makes money when we replace something, does he then not have a motivation to give us an exaggerated list? Because that's how they make their list, right? The other piece is they make ten percent when we do these projects. Do, do, they made the list for free, do they now say, well, when you go to do that project, I get ten percent? Regardless of whether you do it with me or not. Case in point, if we put an addition on a middle school, and as part of that project, we decide that the septic system needs to be enlarged, and they've said, well, your septic system needs to be replaced, you owe me ten percent, even though you're doing it with a different contractor, so just kind of things to, to, to look out for.